The first thing is the roll call.
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grahamhaus.
Here.
Alderman Novett.
Here.
Alderman Widman.
Here.
Alderman Goldtra.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Here.
Chairman Luby.
Here.
And Alderman Palmer is absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of the March 1st committee meeting. You've all received them. Any additions or corrections? There being none, can we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Then moved in second. It all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Tonight, we have a consideration of approval for the Forest Park Master Plan. Contrary to what some people think, this is an informational meeting tonight for the council. We are not voting on this at all. We'll be hearing the plan, hearing about it. The council will be asking questions. This is the first real presentation to the council on this issue. We are limited in our time tonight to six -- or, you know, 7:30, 6:30 now, to 7:30, so we have to fit this all in. I'm not sure how much time there will be for any public comment or questions. So, if we can get started.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today and talk a little bit about one of the assets in Lake Forest, Forest Park. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and the Alderman City. Our community has been engaged over the past year.
Ralph, we all know who you are. Introduce yourself.
Oh.
For all those watching on TV.
I apologize. My name is Ralph Diswaldo. I've been a resident of Lake Forest for most of my life. I live at 1418 Green Bay Road, and I'm the current chairman of the Park and Rec Board. Our community over the past year has been engaged in some important discussions concerning Forest Park. There have been multiple visioning sessions, tours of the park, meetings with residents, organizations throughout the community, and discussions that have taken place throughout the community. Since October 2009, the project has been shared with city town hall meetings, Park and Rec Board meetings, and the Historic Preservation Commission meetings. Resident feedback has been valued and solicited throughout the process, and the board and city council have received numerous letters, both for and against the project. This is a project of great importance to the city, as it helps preserve a special park for many future generations to enjoy. There are those in the community that say, "Leave it alone. Don't change the park. Leave it as -- reserve it back to the 1901 OC Simons Plan." Many others in the community have expressed their desire to see us address some of the obvious deterioration problems in the park, and bring the park up to current standards, yet maintaining the historical value of the park. The Park Board recognizes the complexity of these issues that include finding the right balance between rehabbing the park and preserving its historical importance to the community. As you know, the reality is, Park and Rec Department doesn't have the money to do this project. So, one of the important parts of the project is to find a partner in the community that will assist us in not only the development of the master plan, but hopefully the raising of the funds to move forward with any reservation, any renovation to take part in this park. We have such a partner in the city. In fact, the city's had this partner for over 100 years, the Lake Forest Garden Club. They've done some amazing things in the city of Lake Forest, and they've agreed to tackle this project through developing a master plan and hiring a developer that unfortunately won't be with us tonight because of the problems at O'Hare. Mr. Steven Simpson, the architect that was -- landscape architect that was supposed to be here tonight, is sitting on a plane in a runway at this point in time. So, he's still coming to Lake Forest for a meeting that he won't be able to attend because of his lateness, but we still will have the presentation tonight as well. But the Lake Forest Garden Club has donated to the city a master plan for this park, and they've also agreed to assist us in the fundraising of the park, much like they've done in a number of projects that have taken place in Lake Forest over the last 100 years. Market Square is probably the one that all of us are most familiar with. They not only developed the master plan for Market Square, but they helped raise millions of dollars to give us the Market Square that we have today. And just as a side note, that was a project, you know, when they did it, had a little controversial at the time. It was something that not all the residents of Lake Forest embraced at that time. There's no question that the refurbishment or renovation of this special park has solicited opposition, and it's also solicited support from our community. Change is always hard in Lake Forest. I think if you're an Alderman in this city, you understand that. But one of the things that's always impressed me about the city of Lake Forest is the passion that people have for Lake Forest, the passion that they have for our parks, the passion that they have for the open lands, and the passion that they have for the historical preservation of Lake Forest. It's through that passion that a number of community people have come forward with comments, and even though they haven't been passionate for the park, they've helped develop this plan, and they've helped steer us in the right direction. And it's that passion that going forward that I hope that those community residents will still be involved in the process as we move forward, because it's helped us develop the plan. It's helped Steven Simpson develop the plan. The plan was unanimously supported by the Park and Rec Board at our March 23 meeting, and we hope you support this proactive planning document as well. But once again, this has been a process that's taken place over the last year. It's been a positive process, and even though for some of you that have received some of the letters and some of the bantering and some of the emails, I want you to know as a Park and Board Chairman, those have all been taken by the Park and Board as a positive reaction for the community to preserve something. We think we're going forward in the right direction. We believe we're going forward in the right direction. That's why we unanimously supported it as a Park Board. What I'd like to do at this point in time is introduce the Lake Forest Garden Club, who I think we all owe a great deal of thanks for their support in the past and their support moving forward. Their president is with us tonight, Karen Stensrude, President of Lake Forest Garden Club, along with their Forest Park Master Plan Chairman, Chairmans Jane O'Neill and Joan Dupree. So, if you'd like to come up, and thank you for all your support. We really do appreciate it.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for letting us come this evening to talk to you. The Lake Forest Garden Club is privileged to present to you a master design plan for Forest Park. When the city approached us in 2008 about a long-range project concerning the restoration of Forest Park, we thought we could facilitate this wish and be good stewards of this unique landscape. A master plan will serve as a comprehensive plan to guide future decisions about Forest Park, using OC Simons' landscape gardening philosophies and design with respect to natural systems and organizing a framework for the rehabilitation of parks' landscape. Following the acceptance of the master plan, we will form an advisory committee using the format applied to Market Square 2000. This group will be made up of community leaders and professionals, representatives from Open Lands Historic Preservation Foundation, the Chicago Botanic Garden, Lake Forest College, and members of garden clubs within Lake Forest. The advisory group will work together with the city and will guide the project's design development and fundraising endeavors. We have a community with a wealth of expertise and a devotion to civic involvement. Working together makes a stronger team and a healthier community. We will also stress the importance of environmental responsibility for future generations. Our collective stewardship will be a lesson for our children and our grandchildren.
My name is Joan Dupree. This evening, we were hoping that Steven Stimson was going to return and walk us through a master landscape plan, but Mary will do that instead. We wanted to let you know that a committee of 20 comprised of landscape designers, conservationists, gardeners, historians, and representatives from the city researched, interviewed, and unanimously selected the firm of Steven Stimson Associates from Falmouth, Maine. Many of you have been introduced to Steven, but for those who have not, Steven is a graduate of the University of Massachusetts and the Harvard Graduate School of Design in Landscape Architecture. He has worked with many cities across the country in preserving public spaces. As you will see, his team has taken your feedback and incorporated those thoughts in creating a plan that honors the spirit of OC Simons. We also want to share with the board our appreciation for the thought, time, and energy Mary and Dan have given to this project, as well as Ralph and the Park Board. And now, I will let Mary present the plan. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to do my best to replace our landscape architect who knew this -- put this presentation together, so I'm going to walk you through it and cover hopefully as much detail as I can. It's been a wonderful project with Steven, and just to let you know, he got on an airplane this morning only to be told that there was delays, and so they brought him back to the -- his ramp, and they got him off the plane and told him that flight was canceled, and he could try to fly later in the day. Waited later in the day, got a second flight, pulled the plane away from it. They came on and said there was now mechanical problems, and they all had to come back to the airport and disembark and find a new flight. So, he got on a third flight, and he called me from the flight saying, "We don't know why. We've rolled away from the ramp. I've been sitting here for an hour. We don't know what's going on. I'm hoping that I will make it." And now, we find out that O'Hare is closed. So, I do want you to know, he really wanted to be here tonight.
Mary, I hardly find that those are good excuses.
So, he really, really tried to get here, so I will try to cover his presentation, and we had hoped maybe he would even be here in time to field specific questions, but I don't think that will happen. So, as I go through this, you know, at the end, we'll take questions from you, obviously, but if there's something I can answer tonight, we will most certainly be happy to write that down and have Steven respond to you, get that out to you as well. So, with that, I'll get started. I gotta learn how to use this one. And I'm going to be following along a little bit in the master plan book that you received, and I'm not going to do every page of it because it's quite lengthy, but, you know, we did have a design process. We talked about visioning sessions with the community, public meetings, and that kind of thing, and that went -- transpired throughout the year in the last 10 months. The first part of the master plan booklet that Steven really wanted to start as a framework, if you will, for this whole plan was understanding, if you will, the regional context that this particular park is located, and it is quite unique in the fact that it is a significant location for watershed and hydrology of this entire region. And from that perspective, he really took that into consideration, and we should take that in consideration. We look at the design of this plan, because drainage and how we handle water and the flow of water throughout this park is absolutely critical to what will preserve this park going forward. These are some maps that are in the master plan booklet that kind of give you an idea of how that regional context works. That small part that's all the way to the -- in the lime green there is really the small strip of land where everything in that area is flowing towards the lake. Everything else is flowing towards the Mississippi. So, it's really quite amazing that we have this strip of land here that is playing such a critical role draining right into Lake Michigan, which of course, as we know, is a significant body of water for us. Moving on into the next slide here, it just kind of gives you the visual context of some of the green corridors and the main ravines that we see kind of connecting and taking you right down to this particular park. And the biggest section in the middle is Lake Forest College. At the bottom, in Lake Forest College, of course, in two sections, if you will. And then, you can also see here some of the other routes, if you will, of how water moves in to the east and down through this particular park. He put in there quite an extensive chart as well for you as far as the ecoregion descriptions and understanding the soil, the geology, the -- it's all divided, and this is all tracked for vegetation, et cetera. And so, he also did a lot of research, trying to make sure he thoroughly understood what would do well in this area, cognizant of how we handled the soils, and anything that we would propose here from we get to landscaping perspective has been taken into that kind of regional context as well. You know, as we mentioned, the history of this park is quite interesting in that, you know, it's the oldest park in the community. When I arrived as the director, one of the things that surprised me was that there was no plans in existence really for a master plan for this park. I couldn't put my hands really on anything, and I was getting daily, you know, monthly calls on, "Can I drop, you know, plant a tree in my memory of a family member? Can --" We had a bench, and, you know, I said, "Well, gee, we've got 98 benches, and we've got a lot of trees down here, and, you know, what is the plan?" So, that was one of the reasons why we really kind of started to understand the need for a master plan. So, we went back through some of the history and the files of this. Art Miller and others in the community were extremely helpful. The Lake Forest Preservation Foundation was extremely helpful in helping us gather some of the materials to understand, you know, really the history of this particular park. And it was planned with Almar and Hotchkiss in 1861, and then it's about approximately land areas, about 17 square miles in this whole plat that you're seeing up here right now. And the population back in this, you know, in 1900 was around 2,000 residents, and now we're talking 22,000. So, you can currently, you know, see how it's changed from a historical perspective. The park had been at one point a golf course in the mid-1800s. It was in 1901 that OC Simons came in and began his, you know, participation with the park. This was also during a time when the City Beautiful Movement was happening, and this sketch was around 1900, and it showed some of the ambitious ideas of what could possibly be happening down at our lakefront even back in 1900. And though we don't have this and never was built, it was obvious there's interesting connections even with the table land above. You can kind of see some of the pathways that they were indicating could possibly exist and bringing you down actually to the lake. Now, OC Simons was part of the Prairie School philosophy of landscape design, and these are some images that reflect some of that landscape design. I'm not going to try to explain them all because I'm not as versed as Steven would have been, but we really wanted to kind of share the thought here that we were trying to embrace OC Simons' Midwest Prairie-style design, as well as recognizing some of his very critical design features that he was known for, which was rooms, making your way through small rooms, having surprise moments when you opened up into vistas and things like that. And this gives you a sense of some of that kind of imagery right here of some of the plans that we had. This is OC Simons. As I mentioned, he -- the plan that we had was outdated in 1901. Nobody really knows. We have not been able to identify anyone who's been able to tell us whether or not the actual plan that we have was ever fully implemented. We don't believe it was, though we think there's remnants of the plan that did happen and still exist in the park today. But I think that's important. But OC Simons also had a history of not necessarily documenting all of his projects thoroughly, and historians that do a lot of his research and stuff say there was -- he's done many projects elsewhere that was never ever written down. It was kind of after it was built. It might have, you know, been documented or commented on. So, that makes it kind of challenging for us when we look at it from a historical perspective of really trying to determine, you know, what is the essential elements that still remain and what we do want to continue to include in today's park down there. These are just some visual images from over a history of time, looking at the -- from the vistas. The one that's on the lower left, let me see if I can get my laser pointer working. This one is interesting that this is Spring Lane, looking straight out. You do get a little bit of a view out to the lake from Spring Lane. This is sitting on the bluff edge and looking out. So, you know, since early history, there has been an interest of, you know, people gathering near the bluff's edge. However, today, it's a little bit distracting when you go to look at the bluff's edge or you spend time in the park, and we have quite a few, you know, different memorials and signage and et cetera happening down there, and that's one of the intents here of this plan, too, is not only understanding the vegetation and some of the pedestrian-type views, but also, you know, making sure that all aspects visually in this park are cohesive, that, you know, we have it well thought out, and we have a plan on how to incorporate this, because I think it is important. I think it's a wonderful park, and we want to have families still be able to cherish their memories that are down there, and how do we do that in an effective manner. So, this is something, and we, when we move forward, we'll be working on more detail to this, but it's not a -- it's been recognized as a need that we want to develop further, but we don't have the plan yet worked out on that level of detail. So, community input, I, as I mentioned, we had visioning sessions starting in June of last year. We had two. We had a September visioning sessions. We did park tours. The garden club ladies, I think they have all put pedometers on their waist just so they can figure out how many miles that they walk, because they've been in the park so many times with different residents and sharing the resident, you know, what is the current conditions down at the park. It has been a wonderful public process with a lot of feedback, and as Ralph said in his opening comments, we've really tried to take that into consideration, and the plan has evolved since the beginning with this particular project. So, with that, I'm going to jump in right way with the master plan. That is now the one that we were asking the city council to look at and give us some feedback on tonight. This first image, and I'm struggling because my packet's in a little different order, so I'm going to go through the slides up there. This first image is really what you see today when you come down to the park, and what it highlights for you is the different uses and how they are shared. And I think that's a very important part of this particular park that is very challenging and is of concern, I think, now, is that we have very few pedestrian-only areas on the upper table land. It's all shared with the automobile, and you see different times of the year, people with young children, you know, those walking, riding a bike, and the cars all sharing the paths. And this dotted line gives you an idea. This is the Ring Road. Here's Deer Path coming up. And then, as you go south down Lake Road, there's no sidewalk there, so people use the road to walk or jog or what have you. And then, this is the Spring Lane coming in here. So, they either can continue on down the boat ramp, and they use the roads to do that, or they can continue on the loop road and come in, and this is all car and vehicle shared. The yellow spaces that you see up there are existing parking lots, and I'm going to switch gears here for a second, see what the next slide is. And this might help you see. I'm going to go back. I don't like that. Go back one slide. It will go back. No. Sorry. Let's bring this back. Somehow, we're now skipping slides. There we go. Okay. This slide, as you can see, this is the currently the 20 parking spaces that are located right at the top of the staircase. This is the staircase down to the lower beach, and then this is the upper south parking lot that exists today. Both of these are asphalt lots. This space accommodates 20 cars, and this one accommodates 48 spaces, and we have, you know, handicapped spaces in both those locations as well. Then, on the lower level, we have the what's called the north parking lot, and then on the south end, we have the lower south parking. The lower south parking, this is a permit parking area. We do a lot of boat serve, you know, program down there with our boat basin. We have power boats, sailboats, et cetera, and we bring in right now between permits and for parking, as well as from our boating, close to $200,000 in revenue a year, and that is something that does support over, you know, expenses throughout this particular piece of property, and it's an important revenue stream for us from a parking perspective. So, currently, the way the parking works is that most people like to park on the north end. It's where the main pavilion is, restrooms, turnaround, et cetera, and, you know, residents drive down, then they can fill in that lot. Once it's full, our staff direct those to park up here on the Ring Road and the 20-car parking spot or the upper south. Once these areas are filled, then we then allow parking to go to the lower level. And right now, we've been allowing a maximum of 20 cars to go to the lower level, because on days when the beach is busy, the days when the boating's busy. So, that's part of the challenge, and we do have those who buy their parking and boating permits and, you know, want to park on that lower end when they show up with their boats and have come all the way down. So, that's a little bit of the dynamics of the parking area. Now, having said that, though, too, I want to mention that I think there's opportunity to maybe expand that a little bit on that lower south area to accommodate a few more cars when possible, and then also, too, I think that, you know, we will change this order of how, you know, you park where it gets filled, and we'll have a little bit more communication with our residents and help them understand where the parking areas are. I think a lot of people don't know about the upper south parking lot. If they don't go down towards the boating area, they may never see that parking lot, so we could do a better education with that. Moving on to the next slide. This next slide is an illustration of OC Simons' plant vegetation as he had it illustrated. We -- Steven took his plan, and he had it colorized, so it would help you more easily visualize the topography and the plant palette that was down there. And as you can see, when you look at this particular plan, the -- this is the north end, and it was heavily wooded near the ravine, this north ravine, and the same thing on the south end, again, the south ravine. Those formed the two bookends to this park and were considered very heavily forested. But in addition to that, on the south, near the south parking lot now, we still have a remnant of that heavily forested wooded area, and then on the north tip, we have some trees that are still up there, but it's not heavily forested much anymore. It's wood chipped underneath those trees, and we've really lost pretty much that forested area. In addition to that, you know, this shows really this more heavily wooded area kind of through what is the lawn now, though we do have trees as well. This is a little bit more dense, I think, but you can see one of the things OC Simons tried to do with this, and you'll see in the slides coming up, is still keep some corridors and just different moments to see the lake, even though you were coming in and out of these wooded areas or in and out of the lawn and going through the woods. And that's an important design element that Steven tried to consider and take into the right balance with what we like to do with the park today, which many of the residents in the survey and have talked to us or sent letters want to keep that lawn area to a large extent. They love the frisbee throwing, the football playing, you know, that kind of thing, and they don't want to see it, you know, be a completely forested area. But Steven is trying to bring back, you know, the treeing element, and where we could put those in the park to be, you know, as close as possible is bringing back some of this imagery that OC Simons had. Go to the next slide, I hope. So, this begins to give you an idea here of the vistas that were in existence with OC Simons. And if you look at that, he really had four bane vistas, and those were as you came down the Deer Path, and you could see kind of right through that corridor of trees. He had a second one kind of in the middle, the sweet spot, if you will, of the park, where the lawn and the trees kind of had a gap again. And then, he had this one, Spring Lane, looking right through Spring Lane. It overlaps a little bit with this one. And then, he had one right before you entered the, where we now have, we call it kind of the glade at the end, where we have a few picnic tables. The Crawford's Home is like right here, and this is Spring and then Lake. And then, of course, down on the south end, which now is parking lot and quite overgrown. This next slide was really trying to give you an idea of what our present-day survey looks like, and you can visually, you know, from what you saw a minute ago, can see how we've lost those big groupings of trees on this end, and we still have it somewhat right here in the middle, and then we've lost it again. It's very sparse, and then we don't really have a good wooded area until you get to the very south tip of the park. This is what current-day vision, you know, our visuals would be from Lake Road, and we don't have many openings. Now, two years ago, the city started to remove some of the understory on the north end of the park along the bluff, and people liked the opening the vistas that we started to do with that, and that was really important and helpful for, you know, creating the understory to help us with erosion issues and also opening the vistas. So, our views right now, we have a lot of blocked corridor views, and though it has gotten somewhat better, and if you go down the winter, of course, you can see the lake much more easily than you can in the summer, but during the summer, there's not many openings there where you can see the lake. In this next slide, we'll give you an idea of what Steven was proposing as opportunities for tracks where our existing trees are, which are the green round circles on the plan, with what the white circles are, which would be existing trees that could be relocated or removed depending on, you know, the final landscape plan that would come together. But it gives you a little bit of a flavor of, you know, some of the planting that's currently down there. We do have some, we did do a full tree inventory. We know all the trees. We've had them plotted. We know their condition, their size, and so we have a good handle on really what we have existing down there and what their conditions are, and that will be, play an important role as we do move forward with the landscape details. And I want to, you know, reassure people that, you know, we aren't looking to do massive clearing, but we are looking to, you know, replace them or relocate them in order to create a better ambiance and a historical perspective on this park. And this would give you an idea of the proposed vegetation, and you could see how he's masked again a little bit more trees to the north end, just in this And you could see how he's masked again a little bit more trees to the north end, just in this area. Again, similar to what O.C. Simons had, keeping these small in-and-out pockets of visuals. And then, of course, the south end where we have the wooded parcel existing now. And this would give you an idea of the new vistas that would come with this new planting scheme. Again, if you can refer back or think back to what you saw a few minutes ago with O.C. Simons' visuals, again, we've got these three main ones going through, the one from Spring that would peek through. And then we would have the one on the south end. Now, one of the things I think is really important to understand on the south end is that right now, there's no views at all. That whole parking lot is very dense with wood all the way around any way you look. You don't see the lake from the south end. So one of his ideas and his consideration here was to create a view, though, from that south parking lot. I think that's a really important element with this plan because we do want to have an area where if you come in your vehicle or in your car and you have any special needs, or it's cold day and you don't want to have to get out of a car, but you'd like to have a peek at the lake, you could do that from there. Am I the one that's screeching? Do you guys hear that, or is it just me over here? The microphone? It's good? Okay. Okay. Keep moving along. This next one, again, I think just reiterates that a little bit more with the O.C. Simons versus what he's proposing. You can see them side by side now. And I think you can get a good sense of that. You know, he's respected very much the history of the park while trying to, you know, incorporate and maintain many of the desires and needs that we have today. The other thing that we have to recognize is this park, you know, does come with a variety of ecosystems down there. As we mentioned, the woods, the lawn. And he would really like, he put this slide together to give some visual definition to what he would see as for those planting pallets down there. And the north end, you know, he's really calling more of an urban savanna that would, you know, have some trees in there, but also some lower plant materials, too. And that would be very low maintenance, low fescue, you know, kind of area. Very low maintenance, but green it up, get rid of the wood chips, put plants in there that help us with their drainage and erosion issues. So really trying to be sensitive by recreating, if you will, on that north end, that lushness that the woods would have had, you know, a long time ago. And then the middle of the lawn would still be the table and trees. And we would have very well-drained soils, obviously, in that kind of area. And he gave a, you know, a possible list. This isn't what we're saying we're planting. These are just possible ideas of what could be planted in these particular zones. And the south end, we would consider our mature woodland. We have some wonderful trees in that area. We also have, in the spring, if you go down now, you'll start to see we've got trout lilies and wild violets and a whole host of, you know, wonderful wildflowers that are hard to see because they're being so choked out with the undergrowth that we have right now. So getting into some of the specific zones of the park, before we do that, this is an overview of what the total master plan site would look like if we were to implement all the phases and all the design elements that are being considered here. And I'll help everybody kind of again to reference where we are on this site plan. This would be Deer Path right here, coming in. And this would be Spring Lane down here. And then this is obviously the drive that takes you down on the north side to the lower level. And then this would take you down to the boating facility. There's that upper south parking lot. And so this, there are, we identified 11 different bullet key elements on this site plan for everyone. And again, these are to help call out, you know, features of this park that we are proposing. Go to the next slide. The north end of the tip, we're going to break it up now into sections and kind of explain it in a little bit more detail. The north section of this particular park was where we want to reinstate some of the woodland trees in the mesic areas. And what we were recommending here was, in this call-out area, this is a pedestrian path now. This is the ring road as we currently have it, the dotted line showing where it comes along, and then it comes back out. So we're proposing that this in portion of what was the ring road would become pedestrian, the whole loop road become pedestrian. But in its north corner, this is a wider, a little bit wider access point, and this would be on that north point. We have identified this as a possible area for a future parking area if needed. This was one that received quite a bit of feedback from the community as a concern of adding parking areas in this park. And do we need to do that? We have, we looked at many options when we talked about parking in early design phases of this particular park and this issue. And this, the thought here was, and we'll show you a slide here in a second, that, you know, possibly the parking could go here facing north. The cars would face north. You could do as few or as many spaces as you feel would be necessary or beneficial for the community. And it could also have a turnaround area. But at this point in the plan, we're not recommending that. It was one of those items that we felt, why build it until we could validate that the need was there? And the flexibility of Stephen's plan would allow us to take that into consideration in the future should we need to move in that direction. I'm not moving again.
Just looking at that, are you going to have, it looks like you've added walking paths and bicycle paths up there. And are they, can people take their bicycle on the walking path? Are you just adding a lot of new ones, or? They're multi-use?
The, what is currently the ring road would be 10 feet wide, and that would allow us to have bicycles, stroller, and pedestrians on that wider path. The smaller pedestrian areas, these are kind of the connecting sections, if you will, the smaller sidewalks. We would not encourage probably the bike riding there, but.
Don't you think they're going to use that?
They might. I mean, the bikers that usually ride in distances aren't going to go on the wider road, I think. But, I mean, it's, we have sidewalks throughout Lake Forest, and we see people riding on it or walking on it and stuff. So, you know, we are going to try to encourage, obviously, this is pedestrian. And that's something if we don't want to have the bikes on there, we find it's not desirable. That's something we could also, you know, revisit. But this is 10 feet wide. This path that we're proposing is 10 feet wide for a couple reasons. That would be the width that would be desirable to allow us to bring our crews in, to do the landscaping and the work that they would need to do from maintenance in the park, trash barrel pickup, that kind of thing. And also, emergency vehicles then could also get into the park if need be. Or if we had an event where we need to drop off things, we would have that access. So that was the intent of this wider path in this part of the park. And also to give as much opportunity for people to enjoy it together and have those close vistas. This was connection loop mainly because we heard from a lot of the exercise people down there that they would like to have the ability to make more of a circuit, you know, circuit without having to go all the way to the lower level. And there was no sidewalk on Lake Road on the south side, so, or the, I guess it would be the west side of it. And so that was an attempt to provide that continuous experience if you wanted to in the park.
So those are all paved?
Those are all crushed, could be a limestone-type material, not paved, not hardscape. So they would be ADA. You know, they would be a material like you see at the Botanic Gardens, maybe Middle Fork Savannah. They would be very accessible for, you know, different needs. And so they would be, you know, you know, it's not, it's not like shredded bark or fiber or anything. It would be a hard-packed surface that we could maintain. Okay. So this gives you an image of the parking lot, as I just mentioned, in the future should we want to go in that direction, though that, again, that wasn't one that we were recommending initially. This is a view from looking straight down Deer Path towards the lake. And this was last March on, or April, right before the day of smelteramo was going on. And you can see the cars in March parked there that are facing westbound and in the vistas. This next view was during the summer, that same point looking out. And you can see when the trees leaf out, how much lusher that is. And this was just some imagery that Stephen wanted to share. It made, this is just a rendition, so this is not the exact look. It's not the exact trees. But it is, give you an idea from Deer Path how we could open up those views. The staircase is an area that we've identified also in this plan, though initially the plan was going to address just the table land. But because these connecting elements needed to be considered as well, we did add it to the plan. There is some deterioration on the stairs. There's deterioration on the steps in the building. So this is, the idea here is just to kind of spruce them up with a better quality surface material and allow us to provide safer access going up and down them because they're quite narrow and quite steep on the north half of it. The walkway continues down the park, and it was called the bluff walk. And we were proposing just, just south of where the seating area is, to pull back on the table land and build some very low seat walls, very small, but would allow multiple families to gather, to look out at the lake and enjoy that. This would pull back into the park table, and as I mentioned, the dotted line, as you can see, is currently the road now coming into the parking lot. So this is back behind where, past where the road is existing. That would allow us to get us to a slope of 22 intercept to help stabilize that sweet area of the park. It would allow us to open up the vista and add opportunities there for people to gather and enjoy the lake. And then they would continue on down the path. I got to go faster. So the, this is looking down there where that parking lot is towards where that seating area would be. This is what it looks like today. As you can see, quite a large expanse of asphalt with the benches on the left-hand side. And then this is, gives you an idea of what it proposed could look like. And so, you know, again, the material, quite accessible for different uses, some low seat areas. From lake view, when you would look over towards the park, you would look east, you would not see these seat walls because this is an infinity view. So the seating kind of is recessed into that table land a little bit, which is how we get the slope also at an angle that stabilized, helps us stabilize the bluff. And then this gives you a view going further on down where it is today, what Stephen would do to open it. I went too fast, sorry. Would open the views as you move towards the south woodland area. This is a south upper parking lot. Currently, this would be the new configuration. All we're doing is adding to the west in this lot by really the depth of one car length. But we can expand by doing that and get up to 68 cars in this particular lot. We are proposing a bioswale in the middle to help us filter the water and clean the water and carry it to the city's storm sewers. And then again, that is an erosion control measure as well as an environmental clean water initiative that we wanted to do. Is in this location that we would also envision, we would have the ability for our camp buses to come in and be able to loop and leave. This would be an opportunity for those in their cars to sit. This would be a vista that would be opened up. You could walk right out here, right onto this very simple promenade that's already existing, and enjoy the lake views and come right back into the car and enjoy the lake from the upper table land from that south parking lot. This is the wooded glade I mentioned that currently exists. Stephen would see us clearing that understory out and really putting high-quality woodland plants in there, be low maintenance again. But we would really reintroduce natives, the plantings that we would want in that location compared to some of the buckthorn and the other invases that we have in that area. This is the south parking lot today. It's a solid sheet of asphalt. And this is the proposed new lot could look like. It is recommended as a combination of paver as well as asphalt so that we have as much environmental and capability of absorbing the water there, but not making it a solid asphalt sheet that currently exists. And that brings us back to the beginning of the plan. And with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
Okay. Questions from the members of the council?
Just a procedural question. Do we want any comment from other people in the audience?
Well, we may, we may not have time for that. We have some time now for the council, but we certainly need to get our questions answered for it to come back and them to do the research on answering those things.
I'll start a couple of general questions, Mary, because we've run out of time. Mary, I would assume that the busiest time would be from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Do we have an idea of, and it's weekends predominantly, and do we know how many times we go to the overflow during that time period where you have the ring road? You go, you've filled the south park, parking lot, and you start to go using the boat ramp, plus you have the boaters. How many times during the summer does that reach a full time?
Well, we look back. Right now, what we do is we track all the cars that come in and the number of people in the cars. And we do that on account with our staff down there, morning and afternoon. So we don't know it by hour, you know, exactly when we hit overflow. But looking back, this last year, we had around 58,000 visits to the lakefront that came in through residents. And then the car counts were, you know, obviously, in that, too. So it is a very busy place. We think, but we didn't track it this way, that we had about eight dates where we were at full to capacity down there. Now, that was a very cool summer. And when we say those dates, it could be the middle of the week or the weekend. It does, it really depends, it was very dependent on weather. We had a lot of cold weekends this last, actually, this year and the year before. So those numbers are a little difficult to gauge. But what I would recommend is that we would do some additional data collection this summer on that. I think we can step that up and make a little more sophisticated count, get a good handle on the volume that we're talking about, and, you know, make sure that we're going in the right direction from a car use perspective down there.
Okay. And a follow-up, if we didn't have this wonderful gift by the garden club and their enthusiasm, what, if we had to do something immediate in terms of the bluff, I don't think we really touched on that during the presentation. Can you give a short answer of what needs to be done if we didn't have this project going on to fix that?
Okay. The south access drive is our most critical, immediate issue that we're dealing with right now. We have drainage problems with erosion that's occurred under that north portion of the road. And I know city council received a report on that and is aware that we're addressing that. So that is, right now, is our immediate critical. We must stabilize that area. You can already see the bluff starting to fail on both sides. Then the south portion of the road, it used to be the loop road and you could drive on it, was closed in 2000. And that was shored up, and the slope was cut back there to help stabilize that particular area, that particular portion of the park. That is still holding and is doing pretty well. In the core lawn area here, we have very poor drainage occurring. We have some, we do have some catch basins, but to the level that they're functioning is really unknown. And I do think it's important that we do some, study the summer on the slope stability and get a good handle on that. The engineering department, you know, would work with us on that to get that information. I did have Shabika and Associates come out. We did a visual walk of the park, not any engineering study, but a visual of that. And we have about four areas right out, directly across from where Spring Lane comes in. There's two areas, like each side of that lane is very low. And you can see the ground is already run into a gully kind of shape. And you can see that's where water is running down the face of the bluff quite extensively when we have drainage issues. The pinch points are obviously our biggest concern. Right past the 20-car parking spot at the top of the stairs, the road comes very close to where the bluff edge is. And so, again, that's an area of prime concern, and they had concern there, too, because our bluffs are very steep, and that's an issue. So I think this summer, we really need to get a handle on really what is our drainage patterns that are occurring down there? And then what is, you know, the life expectancy potentially? But the reality is, in this whole area, we have seen unprecedented rains in the last several years. And we have seen unprecedented failures of our bluff and ravines. And we have an opportunity, I think, here to be proactive before our bluff is gone and try to look at ways that we could preserve it. So that was kind of the goal here. So to, I guess, hopefully I've answered that for you.
Yeah. We, it was referred to in the report, had a very comprehensive survey over this with the citizens. Can we get a copy of those results with how the votes were?
Sure.
So we can see what that is.
John, may I go back to a comment I made earlier? It's about 7:25 now, and we have received some written materials, which we have in front of us, indicating some concern about some of the points in the plan. And certainly from the materials we received, there were some voiced opposition acknowledged by everybody. I personally don't think it is wise for us to short-circuit this conversation, even though we have a plan to only have this portion of the meeting go until 7:30. Given the importance of this, I think we should make sure that anybody who's here who wants to speak to it within a certain limited amount of time has a chance, particularly if they have some critiques of the plan. I think it's unwise to. Uh, I think it's unwise to just get one side, even though we will ask questions on it. And if we need to extend the time for this meeting and postpone the start of our primary meeting, I personally am in favor of that because I think we know from this issue and others, we often get complaints that there hasn't been an adequate voice heard. And I think we need to make sure that it is in this matter.
I would support that, although I think I might suggest one variation if it doesn't violate the rules, and that is that I see the, uh, the emerging youth artist awards at the door. And, uh, maybe we could, uh, award. We could award those awards and, uh, then come back to this.
I, I guess my question would be, you know, the purpose of this was to show us the plan and then do come back at the council meeting and?
And discuss the issue with that.
Discuss and take comment then.
Okay. That's right.
Why, why we would.
So we have, we have a time to do that.
If we have another chance to do it, that's fine.
We will have that at the council meeting and this is the time also for the members of the council to ask questions that they can prepare and get the information back to us. So we have a better understanding at the next meeting as well.
We've also been given a lot of new information tonight. Obviously, we had this planned beforehand, but had we hadn't been walked through it. We got some other additional commentary today. I think we're still going to get some more stuff, uh, later in the week.
We need time to read.
From the HPC. So, you know, I feel like if we do it tonight, we're then going to do it all again.
That's correct.
No doubt about it.
You know, I don't know if that's going to be beneficial to any of us.
And you know, that's, that's fine with me. My only concern is that there'd be adequate time for everybody to be heard, whether it's now or some other time.
No, I think we all agree to that.
The only thing I'm going to suggest is, uh, and clearly, you know, I want things to move along, but I've gotten a number of calls during the past few weeks and if we're going to get testimony at the council meeting, it's really not going to give us adequate time to consider whatever points might be brought forth by the public.
We, we may need to postpone it at that time. And we have done that before with issues that have come forward.
But, yeah, I, where I'm not going to, um, probably prevail on this, I'm kind of supportive, at least as long as it's not repetitious and there's some time limit, getting a general sense of comment. Yeah, again, I don't think that's, uh, the flow from what I'm hearing from council, but some input I think would.
My, my question.
Technically, there is not a place on tonight's agenda for public comment. This is a workshop meeting in the city council. It was here for the city council to hear the presentation for the very first time and take this information in. Let me be, uh, very clear for both the council and for members of the public and anybody watching. Between now and April 19th, when the council gets its packet for the April 19th meeting, it will have not only the information that they received here tonight, it will have all the information from the previous park and record meeting, including all letters called for and against. It will have all the information from the HPC meeting. And if any resident wants to submit something to the city clerk before, uh, I guess that would be April 13th, then that will also be included in your packet. And so all of that data, all of that information, all of that testimony will be submitted. And then on the evening of April 19th, there will be adequate time, the presentation will be abbreviated that evening, the council will ask some more questions, and then it will be opened up for as much public comment as the city council wants to allow that evening before it acts for. They can, uh, as Alden would be pointing out, the council, they feel that there are things that haven't been answered that evening, they don't have to accept the gift on the 19th, they can ask it if they held over to the first meeting of May.
Well, it's also important to point out that this is a master plan. It is not a, a blueprint that can then be acted on. Anything that is approved then has to go back through, uh, the normal process before, you know, any construction or anything like that is done.
And changes can be made at any time. It's not.
Exactly.
... detail as well in the April 19th meeting to exactly what that process will be and what happens if the council accepts it and goes forward.
I, I would just point out one other thing, if this is amenable and it's certainly, I think it's open to the council and I don't see why it couldn't happen, but we do have an agenda item for, or public comment for non-agenda items. So if there were individuals that wanted to speak tonight because they're here already, we could give them that opportunity at that time.
We certainly could.
So I give that, you know, to anyone who came out this evening, there will be an opportunity. We do have, I would like to get through about a dozen elementary kids here that are very excited, jumping up and down to get an award.
Right, right now, are there?
Very early, so.
While we're still doing this.
You will have an opportunity during the non-agenda.
Can we get any questions more to, Mary, that she can prepare us?
I'd like to ask one question. Uh, and that is, one of the things that the U.S. Forest Service has come to be very aware of, and that is that parks, uh, can be over-loved. Uh, they are limiting, uh, a lot of park, uh, by numbers. Have you looked at this park as to how many people, not the how many cars you can park, but how many people, uh, is an appropriate number to have in the park and still have the quality of experience that would be in keeping with the Os, uh, the Simon's, uh, original concept? I think it's very important that we not try and accommodate everyone that wants to park there, but more accommodate just the number of people that can experience the park in the way that it was meant to be experienced. So if you could look at that and see how many people you really expect or to be able to use the park, recognizing that there are frisbees and other things that take a significant amount of square footage.
I, I agree with you. I think it's a unique park and that it's amazing. You can go down there soon as sunrise or even sometimes right before that, um, there's people who start to use the park and enjoy it. It is a park that is, it does absorb our residents, um, and quite beautifully because there is different pockets and areas that people enjoy and they like it at all different times of the day.
I'm just looking for the quantities.
Right. And so I think that is an important element that we want to make sure that, uh, we can accommodate that, so.
Are there any other important questions?
I have, I have two, and I apologize anybody for having gotten us on this procedural sidetrack. Uh, two questions. At the end of this process, it is intended that there will be an agreement between the, uh, the garden club and the, uh, city. And in the materials that we were given, uh, there was a phrase that the garden club was going to quote, "collaborate closely with the city with respect to how this plan rolls out and what we ultimately see." And my question is, um, I guess twofold. How do you see the actual control of what actually does roll out for this project being allocated between the city and the garden club? I, I'd like a little clearer understanding of what quote, "collaborate closely" means.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I won't, I can't speak to all the specifics, but, um, in the Market Square example, there was an agreement that was put together that clearly spelled out what the roles of all the entities would be, the approval processes that would be followed. Obviously, this involves city property and if there's fundraising, the city would have to approve all of its, you know, implementation, whether it's phased or, you know, done over a, you know, a connect, consecutive period of time. So we would have to outline all of that and what the roles of each entity would be, um, though at the end, it is a city property, it is a city park and it's in the historic district. So we want to make sure all of those factions play a significant role going forward. Um, I think the garden club comes in as a partner because they have a lot of community expertise. They can create the synergies of bringing in a lot of groups and organizations to give us good direction and good feedback, whether it's preservation or, you know, open lands or whomever. And I think that they really can help you refine where you are going when you get to the level of specificity without it, you know, all falling on the shoulders of city council. That way they would be kind of the vetting assistance that we would want for this project. So, uh, hopefully that answers that.
Yeah, there's clearly a difference between an advice.
Oh, Steve, it's here. I did not do you justice.
There's clearly a difference between an advisory capacity and a decision-making capacity.
Correct.
And that's the thrust of my question.
Absolutely. There'd be two separate perspectives, right?
And then I have a, one question about actual design itself, and that is, I see that there was some intended work on the canopy and the removal of certain trees in the ravine. Is the plan that, uh, there, the re, the canopy will be adjusted so that there will be the views from each of these three intended paths, including Spring Lane? It did not appear to me that, uh, well, it was a question of whether, in particular Spring Lane, you were going to have that view all the way through, uh, to the lake with a, with the adjustment of the canopy.
Good evening. I'm Steve Stimson. I've been detained at the airport and Logan waiting for the weather to clear. It's good to be here. Sorry I'm so late, but, um, I'll, I'll try to jump in here.
Quickly.
We, uh, we, some thinning has been done by the city, uh, on the bluff, which has been quite effective. We'd like to do more. Um, in, in each case where we're doing those view clearings, we're going to look very carefully at the health of the trees. There are some, what we call invasive species on the bluff, uh, Norway maple and, um, Black locust, uh, to name a few. So, uh, the intent would be, uh, in some cases to lift limbs, in other cases, if a tree is in poor health, uh, we would take the tree out. Those would be looked at tree by tree with the city forester before trees were cut.
Okay. Wrapping this up, um, at this point, because the next group is ready to get started, um, opportunity, if you want to wait till the council meeting to make comments there on non-agenda items, you can do that. Other than that, do we have any quick comments that have nothing to do with what we've spoken about? Therefore, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to, uh, to adjourn?
When did you get your law degree?
Yeah, I'd like to see who'd want to stand up on that one.
Motion to adjourn. Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned. Uh, we'll start in about four minutes.
That is a bit of legal, Ace. I've not seen you do before.